Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's February 12, 2018. It's a special meeting of the York County School Board. But before we start, I'd like to recognize a guest that we have here tonight. We have Mr. Rower and his son, Jalen Rower. Jalen's a fifth grader at Mount Vernon. His mom also teaches there. She's a kindergarten teacher there. But he's here representing PAC 122 as an assignment he's doing tonight. But thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much.[35.04][35.04][applause] We have several presentations lined up for this evening. But first, we have one action item that's on our agenda. It's Resolution 18-04, Resolution Requesting Board Supervisors to Issue General Obligation School Bonds for School Purposes and Consent to the Issuance Thereof. So Dr. Shandor, would you please share any additional information?
Sure. Thank you. I'm going to actually ask Mr. Bowen if he'll share just a brief comment related to this action item.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, there's a Resolution 18-04 requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the issuance of general obligation bonds for school projects. And these are for our 2017 projects. If it's approved, then this will go to a public hearing at the county's February 20th Board Meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Mr. Bowen, for the information. So I now need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-04.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Ford.
A motion made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve Resolution 18-04. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Edfer?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
All right. So now, our first presentation this evening is a request for proposals for food service. So, Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share further information.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and board members. I'm going to ask Ms. Cheryl Parr, Associate Director of School Administration, to come to the podium. She's going to share information related to food service requests for proposals and a tentative timeline for the release of the RFP and the vendor selection process will also be presented. Ms. Parr?
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide information to you about the process for the YCSD food service provider request for proposal or RFP process, which is currently underway. YCSD has contracted food service operations with an outside food service vendor for the past 15 years. Contracts with providers are secured every five years. Since the first contract with Sadekso was established in 2013, it is now time to request proposals for the next contract. For this process, YCSD staff work closely with the York County Central Purchasing Office as well as our Assistant County Attorney. A request for proposal was posted on February 2nd. The request was developed with the York County Purchasing Office, our county attorney, and with input from the Virginia Department of Education's Office of School Nutrition. A pre-proposal meeting occurred today, which included a time for interested vendors to ask questions and to participate in visitations to two YCSD school kitchens. Once proposals are received on March 1st, a stakeholder evaluation committee from YCSD will visit locations where vendors currently provide services. Members of the committee will include a school board member, school board office staff, a York County purchasing management analyst, as well as principal, teacher, parent, and student representatives. After these visits are conducted, the evaluation committee will review information in the proposals as well as information from the vendor visits to select the next provider using the evaluation criteria that you see here on the slide. After this process takes place and the evaluation committee makes a recommendation, the contract for the new vendor will come before the board for approval on April 23rd. Thank you for this opportunity to present this information to you, and I'm happy now to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions?
This is just a standard procedure for us when that contract expires expiration.
Because the contract's here for five years at the time, and so that this one is up, then we're going to move forward.
See what it takes us.
Thank you, Ms. Parr, for that update.
Thank you.
So I'll now let Dr. Shandor share, and I'm sure she'll be ready to the next two presentations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parr, for that presentation. Next, we have Dr. Carroll, our Chief Human Resource Officer. He's going to, he has two presentations. The first one is going to be sharing some information related to our first efforts at centralized hiring for special education teachers. We've shared this topic with you in the past, which has been a challenge for our district. Also, he is going to then move into a joint healthcare study update. So, Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chair Richardson, members of the board. Tonight, I have for you a brief update on projects underway regarding HR issues that you're previously familiar with. You'll remember this data, which was first presented to you in the joint board meeting in December. It highlights a concern that the entire nation and K-12 education is grappling with, and it's becoming an increasing concern for us, the emerging teacher shortage. You can see from this slide that enrollment and university teacher preparation programs nationally fell over a third since school year 2010, and is continuing. The graduates we'll be hiring this spring and summer started their programs the year after this graph ends. And Virginia is not immune. Each year, the state requires a reporting of unfilled positions at the end of September. Statewide, the amount of unfilled positions in 2015 was over 800, and in 2016, it eclipsed 1,000. So what is left for us to contend with is the resulting cumulative effect of a decreased number of candidates exacerbated by ongoing retirements and employees leaving the field as it becomes more increasingly complex and accountable. For this reason, the Division is working on accurately measuring the perceived working conditions of our teachers and addressing identified issues. Research tells us that working conditions are the most important factor in retention of teachers, as long as they're receiving adequate salaries and benefits, which is why we have a strategic objective to ensure that our compensation package is in the top third of the region. Here, we have a slide that reflects the retention challenges that we encounter due to the relative trans latency of our area compensation rates and the increasing difficulty of the profession. Those are shown here, which reflect a retention rate of about 10% for our licensed employees and 14% for our non-licensed. The reason we're here tonight is that special education teachers are of particular concern as this labor market tightens up. We've had an increasing difficulty filling special education positions late in the summer. You can see here that this year, we started with seven and a half openings, and still, one and a half of those remain unfilled to date this year. For next school year, we've embarked on a centralized hiring process where we hire candidates earlier in the season and are extending early contracts without a particular school placement being named. We are averaging, in these last three years, 14 special education departures per year, and so we're making efforts to recruit and hire that now. We had our first round of interviews last week, and we extended nine offers, and so far, eight of those candidates have accepted verbally, and we're working through the letters of intent now. And the ninth may still come with us, but she already had another offer pending, so we're waiting to hear. We've scheduled a second round of interviews at the end of the month and expect to complete filling those 14 slots with those candidates. So at this point, I'll take any questions on that process.
I just have one question. Fabulous, fantastic. I was so looking forward to this presentation because the value of this is priceless. Are we going to have to maybe do this for other areas for YCSD?
Maybe, but right now, this is the only position where we were seeing a repeated trend of not being able to fill all the spots in August and September. So for right now, I'd say no, but this could be a trend in the future if teacher preparation programs continue to put out lower and lower candidates.
That was going to be my question mark. Where there was a time, and I go back to my early years on the board, that there was central hiring. And then that went to letting the schools, you know, there will be candidates, and then the schools make the final decision. And we start looking at the makeup of our schools. So again, now, I'd go back to say, is there a need to have more focused centralized hiring?
Yeah. Well, the problem with centralized hiring is you're taking some choice away from principals when you do that.
Right.
Now, we did include the principals in the interview teams, as long as with members of the Special Education Department. And before that, we had members of the Special Education Department put together the interview questions. So it was a very rigorous process. We feel really good about the candidates that came to us and made it through.
Do you have any background with diversity? Are you ready to talk about the diversity of your candidates yet?
Diversity, no. And I'd like to, even if we did, I'd like to wait until we got all 14 filled. I will say, experience-wise, we had a variety.
Okay.
So the national enrollment and teacher prep programs decline is concerning for all of us. I can tell you, from someone who's recruited for a number of years, when we would go recruit, many years ago, the lines were out the door. And, you know, now, when we go to recruit, it's sad to walk in and see the numbers so small. So that's certainly a concern for us.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then I'll move on to the next item, which is an update on the joint healthcare purchasing feasibility study underway with the county. You'll remember that a couple of Decembers ago, you agreed to take part in a study with the county, and that in Phase 1 of that study, we joined with the county to hire a consultant to study our current healthcare plan offerings and structures, and to guide us through the process in investigating possible savings from joint purchasing. The consultant found that we had a potential combined purchasing power of over 2,000 members, that our plans were comparable, and that we had lower claims costs than the county, but we had a higher percentage of costs from pharmacy claims. And so that is an opportunity for savings. So last November, the board approved moving into Phase 2 of the study, provided we followed eight staff recommendations to protect the quality of the current plan. We have adhered to those recommendations as an RFP was designed for joint purchase of plans that we currently have. And so what we've done right now is we've looked at the plan we have, we're looking for something similar, and we've put that out on the street with these provided recommendations. That RFP just hit the street just this past Friday. Now, there'll be two other RFPs. The second one will be our insurance under the same plan, but carving out the pharmacy claims. This will allow companies called pharmacy benefit managers, or PBMs, to use their, they specialize in this, and they're supposed to be able to bring us savings. So they will be the subject of the second RFP. And then there will be a third, much less complex, RFP dealing with our reinsurance limit. These RFPs together will create market competition to bear out whether the savings projected can be realized. And if an agreement on the RFPs is reached and vendors can satisfactorily demonstrate savings, then both boards will vote on whether to continue to Phase 3, which will be negotiating contracts later in the year. So that concludes my update, and I'll take any questions on that piece now.
If there's no questions, thank you, Dr. Carroll, for providing us with that information. So it's budget season. So, Dr. Shandor, I'll let you update the board on the last topic on the agenda for the evening, as FY 19.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members. So it's my privilege to present my FY 19 proposed budget. Before I begin, I want to thank Mr. Bowen, our new chief finance officer, for leading the work in his first budget for YCSD.
Is that you?
He's not, no, he's certainly not, not after going through this process. He's done a great job leading our team through this. So I also want to thank our cabinet members, executive leadership team, principals, school staff, and community members. All of these folks participated in the process of providing us information to guide this budget. So I want to first begin by sharing a few successes, as well as some areas that are challenging for us. So our team shared some of the school successes with you earlier this year during our strategic plan updates and during our joint retreat with the Board of Supervisors. I'll briefly recap them now. As you can see, all 19 of our schools are fully accredited. Our third and fifth grade reading scores are in the 90s. It's important to note that our third grade scores went from 75 to 90 in the last four years. We're the only division in the region at 90% in third grade. Our middle school reading scores are the highest they've been since 2013, and our graduation rates remain high at over 95%, and four percentage points higher than the state average. However, we have much work to do in the subgroups, but we're proud of our results in these areas. We cannot and should not be satisfied with our current and past successes. We must invest in our continued improvement to overcome challenges that we face. So let's take a look at a few of our challenges. So Dr. Carroll spent some time on this slide earlier, and I want to emphasize this as well. So again, what you're looking at here is the national enrollment and teacher preparation programs. You can see that there's over a 35% decline from the 2008, 2009, 2013, '14 year. So again, Jim, Dr. Carroll provided the statewide amount of unfilled positions. In 2015, it was over 800, and in 2016, it eclipsed 1,000. So that's significant. So the three critical shortage positions in Virginia are career in tech education, special education teachers, and for the first time ever, is elementary education teachers. So again, those are the three critical shortage positions. So how does that impact us in YCSD? Well, each year, we replace 85 teachers roughly each year. Now, that's due to retirement, transfers, resignations, et cetera. And that 85 teachers is roughly 10% of our workforce. This year, we hired elementary teachers through September, and we still have unfilled positions in special education. Again, Dr. Carroll shared with you, we started the year seven and a half teachers short in special ed, and we're currently one and a half short. So when you look at our demographics changes, so the impact of the special education teacher shortage is compounded by the student growth in this area. So in the last 10 years, we've had an 18% increase in students and students with disabilities. The majority of that, 165 students in the last four years. So again, this is a challenge for us. And taking a look at our economically disadvantaged population, this is students who receive free and reduced lunch, there's almost a 90% increase in the last 10 years in this area. Finally, in taking a look at our English learner population, this has nearly doubled in the last 10 years. So the state revenue is based on the governor's proposed budget. So you'll see on the slide up there, an increase of $3.7 million for state. So that's based on essentially three things. That's projected enrollment, and you can see that we have 160 students more than budgeted in FY 18. Also, it's a re-benchmarking year, and also that we have the local composite index reduction. So those are the three things that contribute to that increase. Also, federal, there's no changes. Under county, the county administrator, Mr. Morgan, has indicated that 1.5 million is a working number for us to build this budget. And finally, we will decrease our reliance on the Revenue Stabilization Fund by $300,000. So, board members, you'll recall, last year, we had, we used $900,000. This year, we're using 600, and the plan would be FY 19 would be $300,000. So hopefully FY 2020 would hopefully be zero reliance on the Revenue Stabilization Fund. So this brings our total revenue increase to $4.9 million. So looking at our projected expenditure decreases, staff attrition, $500,000. Our VRS rate reductions is $400,000. If you'll remember, board members, last year, we were hit $1.3 million in our budget last year, so that was pretty significant. So all in all, our net additional resources available is $5.8 million. So again, I mentioned Mr. Bowen leading our process this year. I want to talk to you briefly about what that process looked like. So we held four community sessions throughout each of the four zones in the county. We held those at all the middle schools. We also had an online opportunity for our community to submit their suggestions. We also had all 19 of our principals work with their staff and leadership teams at the schools to provide input to our budget. We also had each department leader within the Division provide us feedback on the budget. All in all, you can see there's 320 suggestions that totaled just over $9 million. So after collecting all of this information, input, and feedback, we conducted a comprehensive review of the submissions. And the three themes that emerged as the priorities driving this budget are instruction and learning, retention and recruitment, and legal compliance and safety. Let's take a deeper look at these priority areas, and I'll share my recommendations. So starting with our priority area of instruction and learning. In order to achieve the Division's goal to engage all students in rigorous experiences, we must provide a comprehensive educational system that meets the needs of the whole child so that each and every student can achieve academic, social, emotional, and personal success. Each of the items listed in this area were identified to provide support to our students and support for our instructional staff. There are additional instructional positions included in the budget, but as they are mandated staffing changes, I'll address those in a few minutes. So the positions, you can see up there on the slide, the seven teachers, that's going to be addressed with a 160-student increase. The math coach, currently, we have one math coordinator for all 19 of our schools, so this position will support the work of the schools. One social worker, in our school division, we have three social workers that support 19 schools and over 12,700 students, so we're in need of another social worker. The 1.5 par educators, by adding this to our budget, this will bring the Division elementary average back to 55 to 1, which was a pre-recession number. And finally, adding two assessment and compliance interventionists, this position will provide extra support, additional support to our elementary schools with specialized programs for students with disabilities, specifically Mount Vernon Elementary School and Grafton-Bebop Elementary School. The per pupil allocation, the school-based per pupil allocation, I've had discussions with the board since I've been here for, now this is my fourth budget, about how can we push resources to the schools? Well, we finally, we have that opportunity now. It's important that we empower our principals and give our schools the flexibility to make decisions for their student needs. And finally, on their textbook and ancillary materials, our textbook budget in the operating is about, is $374,000. So adding $300,000 there is greatly needed. We have relied on textbook adoption and end-of-year funds to fund our replacement, our textbook adoptions for a number of years. So this is a really good opportunity for us. Looking at the next slide, under instruction and learning, the first two items here are funds focused on additional time for staff to prepare and support the instructional programs at their schools. This will be used to address, I'm sorry, middle school professional development. This will be used to address reading for students with disabilities at the middle school level. We've really struggled, 6 to 8, and our principals, and Dr. Vladu and Dr. Gold will utilize these funds for this specific purpose. The teacher leader program, you know, we need to make a strategic and purposeful investment in our teacher leaders. Not every teacher who wants to be a leader wants to be an assistant principal. They want to be leaders in their school. They want to be leaders in their current positions impacting classroom instruction. So that's what that's specifically for. Looking at retention and recruitment, so when you think about this slide, there's a real reason why retention is first. We believe that we've got to keep our best, best of the best of our teachers. So if there's one common denominator in our school division's success, it's our people. We know our number one resource is the dedicated, passionate, and committed employees of YCSD. It's critical that we continue to provide competitive compensation to keep and attract the best. So when you look at this slide, we're looking at a step for eligible employees, licensed staff, 1.5 average, licensed staff market adjustment of 0.5%, and then non-licensed staff, a 2% average. Under restored step for eligible employees, board members, if you'll recall, in my first budget here, we were able to restore a step. So this will be our second opportunity to restore a step. Under health insurance, in the past two years, we've had 5% for employer and 5% for employee. So you can see up there, we're going to go two and a half and two and a half this year. Under stipend and supplement adjustments, we've not raised compensation in this area in almost 25 years. We know the importance of connecting students with schools, whether that's a club, a sport, a band, or with a mentor in that building. We know how important that is. These staff members commit many hours before school, after school, weekends, and through the summer, making a difference in the lives of our students. I value their commitment to developing the whole child. This is something we must and have to do. Finally, the quadrennial review, this is something that, as board members, as you know, we do this every year, depending on which group our employees are in. This year, it's the non-licensed Group 3 positions. Under legal compliance and safety, the positions identified here on the first line, support instruction and learning, but their state and federal mandates require this change for next year. So you've heard a lot of conversation about special education teachers tonight, so you look up there, we're going to add two and a half. There's a teacher shift from Title II funds. We need to add a speech-language pathologist, as well as three EL teachers. Board members, if you recall, a few years ago, we started adding, we needed to add nine, and we broke this up into a three-year process. This is the last year of that process. Also, we are adding middle school athletic trainers. So we currently have, we provide trainers at the high school level. We're going to expand that to cover all of our middle schools. It's something that we desperately needed to do. You can see our county shared services and what the increase will be for our school resource officers. And finally, we're going to add a health services coordinator to, under school administration, under Dr. Butler's team. Finally, under other costs, so we are in desperate need of hiring an HVAC technician and an SBO Secretary III for the copier contract. Our current contract has expired, and we're currently negotiating a new contract for FY 19. This contract will increase the number of multifunctional units in our schools. Another item up there is a work order system. We're in desperate need of a work order system. Mr. Dolak and his team will certainly benefit from this work. We're looking at how this is going to help us improve efficiency, accountability, and making staffing decisions in the future. So looking at the budget outlook summary, under instruction and learning expenditures, you can see those dollars, retention and recruitment expenditures, a little over $3 million, legal and compliance and safety expenditures, $700,000, other cost expenditures, just over $200,000. So our total expenditure increase would be $5.8 million. So our total FY 19 operating budget, so our bottom line is almost $140 million. So we're looking at a 3.66% increase from FY 18. This budget will enable us to continue moving forward with the work of the school division, specifically accomplishing the goals of the strategic plan. So thank you for listening to my presentation and letting me get through that, board members, and I'll take any questions if you have.
Dr.?
Yep, go ahead.
Just a couple things. I'm sort of earth-shattering here. I'm just more curious, the changing student demographics, students with disabilities, the big jump in that, what do you think, what's going on with that? Why do you think that's? I can see economically disadvantaged, I understand, you know, economics, English learners, a lot of folks live into the area. What's, any reason why you can think that that's jumped so much?
Anything that I share with you would be anecdotal. We do have a good reputation for taking care of our students with disabilities, and so I think that that information is shared. We also are a compassionate care area for our military, so families that have students with more particular needs that are in the military, whether it's for U.S.S. or Langley, this is a place where they can come, and typically, they can stay here for a longer period of time than you see with a lot of military families. So those are some of the things that we would point to, but that's more anecdotal information.
Possibly, are we identifying some of these students earlier, perhaps?
Not necessarily.
Some of these needs?
No.
Anyway, I guess it's a good thing. I mean, what you're saying, I...
And we are seeing an increase in our students with autism.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and also for economically disadvantaged, I'll just add, we're about 24, 25% economically disadvantaged. 2008, we were 12%. It's gone from 12 to 25% or so in the last 10 years.
Over on textbooks, we talked about this before, that still keeps us on a, pretty much, a 12-year replacement cycle?
It's going to, and, you know, Dr. Goff, you can weigh in on that one if you'd like.
Yes. Essentially, what that's doing is reducing our reliance on end-of-year funds, even with the addition of $300,000. That's still not going to, if we're doing across the, for example, when we had to buy our literacy materials for... our literacy materials for K 6, excuse me, K 5, that cost us almost $900,000. So even with a $300,000 increase, when we're buying literacy materials for a grade span of elementary, it still doesn't cover that cost. We're still going to depend on it. It's going to still keep us in that 12-, 13-year cycle, simply because for us to go to a 6- or 7-year cycle, we'd have to probably increase the budget by 1 to 1.5 million.
Sort of.
We're chipping away at it.
We're chipping.
Very slowly.
To jump on to this. This is the first year we've been able to add dollars into that account, and since I've been here for 4 years or so.
I was just going to say, to jump into the textbook issue, I know one of the things, as a new board member last year, and other older board members that have been here longer probably had the same visions of electronic textbooks, and I know Mr. Anderson had the same vision, just like I did. But it was explained to me, and I don't think a lot of people in the county understand it, that there are students out here that don't have the media, that don't have the devices to be able to access electronic textbooks. They may not have the internet access. So something I didn't think of, so if people are asking that question, that's one of the answers.
And additionally, most of the textbook vendors, when they sell the books, they'll sell the hard copy book for free, and you're getting an electronic resource. But that electronic resource is only good for a 6-year cycle, because that's the typical state adoption cycle. So even the electronic resources that we get, when we get past the 6th year, those resources aren't available to, the web-based resources aren't available to our teachers anymore.
Versus a textbook?
Yes, yes.
Exactly. So I just wanted to bring that up, that people may ask that question, so, because I had the same questions as many other board members did. So anyway, go ahead.
Got you. One last thing, real quick. And Jim, I know we talked a little bit about the health services coordinator. Can you just, for my sake and maybe for the public's sake, kind of define that position?
Okay. One of the things that we're seeing, of course, is a lot of different health issues for students in schools. So the job has changed a lot and has become much more intense. And we are, we've had a stipend for an additional position in the past, but the nurses aren't able to fill that. Their days are too full to be able to do that. And on top of that, in our school administration office, and no slight to them, but they don't have the expertise to be leading this group and to do professional development for the nurses. So we're looking for somebody with expertise to lead, and they're also going to be doing substitute work there, so that supplements that.
We used to have, that years ago, we had to turn the position loose. We used to have, one of our nurses would have a free afternoon and maybe get a substitute for that particular school, and she would go out and visit the other schools and was that liaison to central office. That position had to die, so I'm happy to see this coming back.
That was a nice arrangement.
Yes, very much so. And I love the athletic trainers in the middle school. But by and large, this is a fantastic budget to say, we get a chance to do some new things, some additional things for the schools. One quick question that I thought about, I didn't think about when we talked about this once before. Our per pupil cost now, and then with this additional $300,000, any idea, can you put an amount, how much that would take our per pupil cost if this budget's passed?
Let me, I'll take a stab at it. So it's, I think it's an extra $23.11 per pupil, per school.
Because right now, it's what, 12, 10?
I'm going to let Mr. Bowen answer that one.
It's about $16.
But the per pupil cost for the year, for the average student is how much? Was that per pupil? Don't worry about that, that's okay. This makes it nice, that it gives more money to that category, probably still not a whole lot to that category. And because of all the accomplishments that we have achieved during the school year, we still did it on the lowest per pupil cost in the area, in that area. So it's still nice to say you have a little bit more, we don't know how much.
Yeah, well, we have a range for high schools, Bill, if you want to give the range.
The range for the high school would be an additional $13,000 to $27,000. For our middle school, it would be $10,000 to $20,000. And for our elementary, $10,000 to $15,000.
And the last thing, I just want to, don't want to be doom and gloom, but this, your budget, which is fantastic, is based on the county budgeting that amount that you have indicated there, so we keep our fingers crossed.
That's right. Well, I'll say this, Dr. Carroll and Mr. Bowen and I have met with Mr. Morgan, we've met with Ms. Owens, and we've met with Ms. McGeadigan. We've had several collaborative meetings. They've all been generally positive, and we've exchanged a lot of good information, so I'm certainly optimistic.
Mr. Anderson, everything?
My everything.
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, it's nice to have that breath of, just the stress level, I can feel it, it's not like it used to be. Having these meetings and discussing what we're going to cut, not over-hatting back. And I do think people need to recognize how hard the staff worked, go to the stakeholders, and really look at what strategically needed to be put back in that's been broken over the years. Shouldn't have used the word "broken," but I think we've seen some where we had to repair some things that we've had to chip away at or chunk away at as we went through our downturns in the economy. But to circle back around, like the shared service SRO, is that for an additional full-time position? Or is that just the cost increases?
It's just the cost increases.
Is nothing in video services or anything else that's shared services?
Nothing in the video services. There is some work that's going to be done on CIP related to the video services. The one thing that we didn't get back from them was an adjustment to the radio maintenance contract. So if that comes back and there is a cost increase, then we'll have to make some adjustments before our final budget.
And then other shared services, like ground maintenance, I think there were things pretty flat.
That was flat, right.
Very good. And I know that this is, we brought this up, but besides, you know, the SRO and the middle school, but all the square footage we've added over the years in our buildings and our custodial staff that just has maintained and kept up with and worked harder and harder and harder with more and more square footage, just are there things that we still need to really take a look at as a board? Yes, it may show that we have a request of more money than what's here as a superintendent's budget, but are there some things that we probably might still need to consider putting into the budget before it becomes our budget, even though we know we may have to take it back out, you know, last-in, last-out kind of things, to include our custodial staff or other areas where we need to really, it's not in here, but maybe it needs to be?
Right, so I'll just, I'll summarize. So there were 320 requests, there were over 9 million in requests. So certainly, there's other opportunities there for, you know, what we did was we prioritized that list after a thorough review and feel like that what we've put into this budget are what's needed. We've been very strategic about that. But if the question is, are there other things that we could add? Of course, yes, there's certainly other items to add there. But I would say that this team's done a really good job of prioritizing for this budget.
Yeah. No, you go. Well, I'd just like to add, well, I'd just like to add, you know, how nice it is to look down here and see total budget gap, goose egg. And I don't know that I've ever seen that before. And you just guys have just done a great job. And it's not only that, the whole environment, and I think most people don't know because they're not necessarily meeting one-on-one with our counterparts, the board supervisors and Neil, and the whole environment is just a good environment this year. And that doesn't just happen, that's worked on. So it's working well, and I just appreciate the approaches that you have and the strategy that you've had, and the progress that you've made. So this is, I think, by far, the best year ever in terms of relationships. We're still hoping for that 1.5.
Yeah, yeah.
But no, you've done a great job, so I'm sorry, I need to cut in.
No, no. So if I can just hit my next steps on the slide? So the next steps, we have a school board public hearing that will be at the next board meeting on February 26. You can see that the school board adopts the proposed budget on March 26. And the county public hearing is the 17th of April, and then the county will adopt that budget May 1.
And is there not a state budget deadline coming up?
So tomorrow, ironically. So tomorrow's crossover, from my understanding. And then, Bill, is it the 17th or the 18th? The 18th, we'll know what our final state number will be.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Dr. Shandor, and your staff. You did an excellent job of putting this budget together. And I agree, it's a great budget, so I came in at a good time as a board member. Oh, yeah, we have another scout that's with us from Pac-122. I guess that's a gentleman, and your name?
Dylan Dwyer.
Dylan Dwyer, so you're here for an assignment also? Great to have you. Okay, so that was the last presentation for the evening, so unless there's further comments, we'll be adjourning the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, February 26 at 7:00 p.m. Your call, so this meeting is adjourned, have a great evening.